... which stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible with Liberty and Justice for All."
Everybody settled? Tara, will you take the roll, please?
Anthony Morante?
Here.
Lynn Connor?
Here.
Dennis Gagnar?
Here.
David Hardy?
Here.
Peter Lewis?
Here.
Neil Toman?
Here.
Neil Zuckerman? Here. Thank you. We have the minutes from the December 14 meeting. Anybody? Corrections? Otherwise? Nobody? I'll entertain a motion to adopt the December minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
I have to ask Ron and Steve this one. I just got this one correspondence from Old Span about closing out their project. What do we do with that? Just close it out?
I suspect what they're seeking is just return of escrow, if there's any.
I can say that.
But there's no other action for the planning board to do.
Yeah, right. Okay. I'll just give that to the secretary. We're going to change the agenda tonight. We have two, an older application and a new one coming, came in tonight. I'm going to save the Hudson Highlands Reserve for last. S E J E Realty is a change in use to light industry. Who is here speaking for them? Yeah.
(Inaudible)
are the contract vendors, purchase a piece of property, which you may know as C K Trucking. It's on the easterly side of Route 9, opposite Cross Road, a little bit north of the junction with 403, where the Appalachian Market is. It's been operating for many years as a trucking and truck repair yard. The applicant has a small steel fabricating company that's located in Tarrytown. He wishes to relocate and put his business in this site. There are actually no planned improvements. The building is adequate for his needs. He does propose some outside storage along the backside of the building between the existing building and the stone and the concrete retaining wall, so that it will be hidden from view. There is some parking that's been taking, that's been going on there. At least the Appalachian Market people park their cars there, the employees park their cars there. And the present owner, who will remain, will remain with a couple of his trucks on site. But other than that, the site has been fairly well cleaned up since the applicant has taken, gone into contract. We really don't anticipate any physical change. When you get down there, you'll see that these trees that we've shown are, provide a fairly dense cover. We don't anticipate moving the entry from Route 9. Basically, there'll be no, we're not anticipating any changes, except in the site, we think will operate a little bit better. The welding and the painting will take place inside. These are, this is not tiny stuff. It's not railings that you put on the top of a retaining wall or for a sidewalk. But it's also not big steel, big heavy steel. They use that structural steel for major buildings. It's medium stuff, not very big. He'll basically bring in pre-cut material, will be delivered, pre-cut the size. He will weld the pieces together. He will take it offsite and deliver it to his job site and install it. I don't have much else to add.
Ron, any comments?
This is the initial appearance of the applicant before the board. You have a technical memorandum from my office. There's some procedural matters to address at this point. We've been through the application, and initially, the board should classify the project pursuant to 175-60C. Procedurally, it meets the classification as a minor project, and so the board should deem it that at tonight's meeting if you wish. And the application may also be deemed complete at this time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to classify this as minor. Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Necessary referrals, because it's on Route 9?
Right. It's along the Route 9 corridor. It must be referred to County Planning. Anzville Creek also runs along the frontage of the property, so the board may wish to refer the matter to the Conservation Board for comment.
And the Garrison Fire Department?
Right. That's a question for the board. There's actually no site improvements proposed.
Okay.
All the work is interior. You should determine if you want to follow your policy to make your typical referral to the local fire department.
Okay. Motion to that effect?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Glenn, is there any painting?
Yes, inside.
So, what kind of disposal?
It's done with a brush.
Sorry?
It's done with a brush.
With a brush. So, there doesn't have to be a booth, or?
No, it's not spray paint. It's done with a brush.
Okay.
Maybe we'll ask people in line to check your cell phones tonight, please.
Come on, airplane mode.
Library.
I guess we should plan a site visit. Anyone? You got a date for us?
All you can do is January 28th or February 4th.
Okay, just January 28th, first date we can get with advertising. Anyone?
What's the date?
January 28th.
Sure.
I'll be unable to attend, but I can catch up with the board comments subsequently.
Anyone else? Everyone else? Okay, motion to that effect? I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
And then I guess after the site visit, Ron, would you schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, that's right.
Would you schedule it for February now, after the site visit will be held, will have been held?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Public hearing is an optional item here.
Yeah, but I don't remember when we've not had one, so.
It's always the first day.
And the board must await comments from the county as well. They have 30 days in which the comment after the referral is made.
We did the referrals. No, no, no. We didn't all in favor of the site on whatever.
Oh, okay. No, we didn't vote on the site visit. All in favor?
Aye.
We set a public hearing for?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. February 15th?
Public hearing, okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions before we let Glenn go?
You gotta vote on the public hearing.
Vote on the public. Thank you. Keep me honest. No, that's quite all right. Thank you.
Andy?
Yes.
Two things. One, I don't know if the board voted on the 239M referral. The other thing is, you should declare yourselves lead agency. There's no other involved agencies, so it's an uncoordinated review, and you should type it as an unlisted action for secret.
Okay. Motion to declare the planning board lead agency?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the 239 referral?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we did vote on the site inspection, did we not?
We did, but you didn't do the public hearing yet.
No, not yet. So, we set on the 15th, right?
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing. Motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
First.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Unlisted action.
Unlisted action.
I didn't hear the motion.
No. Okay. All in favor?
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
9:30 on the 28th?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Ducks in the pond here. Okay, next one we're going to do would have been item number three, is 3052 Route 9, James Copeland. Have you got that in front of them? I don't know. I'll have to leave it back down there. Well, he did the surveying.
Yeah, I did. Copeland's in charge of his own, I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah. Glenn, next one's Jamie Copeland?
Not me.
No.
I don't think so.
Oh, I see your survey, so I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Anybody speak for?
Is there Wi-Fi here?
There is Wi-Fi here, but I don't know what the password is offhand.
Password?
I'd have to go hunt for it. Sorry.
All right. We'll hold this till after. You probably saw the.
Me, I thought he was.
Yeah, I thought he would be.
He thought he'd be going later.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably what happened.
Would you like to do the site visit for Surprise Lake?
Yeah, thank you. We missed the Surprise Lake site visit due to weather. Do we have a date for that?
Would you want to do it the same day as the other one, or no? Back to back? I mean, that's up to you guys.
No.
Right?
Yeah, might as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Site visit for Lake Surprise is?
Which one was it?
1/28. He did.
Do you want to make a motion for that?
Yeah, let me just try to see. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the site visits for Lake Surprise, and then we'll have to decide the order. Motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lake Surprise, and the other one's down in Garrison, practically.
Yes.
Which one are we doing?
I don't know. Any idea?
I couldn't hear it either.
Six of one, half a dozen of the other. Let's just.
Andy, do you know which one we want to do first?
Let's do Garrison first, and then the guys who live in the North Highlands can come home.
All right, the Route 9 Garrison, S E J E Realty will do first. And then site visit, too. Everybody with us? Now, we have a public hearing on the Hudson Highland Reserve, Route 9 and Horton Road. You want to read the, my voice is going?
Do you want to?
No, just.
I want to tell them to sign up, because they have them, because I want to see, because there's a sign up sheet in the back.
Okay.
Who? Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone who wants to speak on this public hearing, please sign up at the sheet in back. Okay. Tara, please read the public notice.
Phillips Town Planning Board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 18, 2018, starting at 7:30 PM at the old VFW Hall, 34 Kemble Avenue, Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. Hudson Highlands Reserve, Route 9, Horton Road, and East Mountain Road North. The 210.1 acre tract involving six separate tax parcels is located on the east side of Route 9 between Horton Road and East Mountain Road North. The eastern edge of the property has frontage on East Mountain Road South. The largest part of the property, 194.5 acres, is located in the rural residential zoning district, of which 153.5 acres are also in the open space overlay district. There are 11.1 acres of the property in the most westerly part of the tract with frontage along Route 9 that are located in the industrial manufacturing zone. The remainder of the property, 4.5 acres, is located in the highway commercial zone along Route 9. The application for preliminary approval is being processed as a conservation subdivision, pursuant to the standards contained within 175-20 of the zoning ordinance. A minimum of 154 acres of the overall tract is proposed to remain undeveloped and protected as open space. The applicant seeks preliminary approval of a subdivision that includes 25 residential lots, each containing approximately one acre. The 25 lots will be served by individual wells and community wastewater treatment facilities. An equestrian center is also proposed. The 4.5 acre parcel, which is improved with an office building, will remain a separate but smaller lot, making room for the proposed access road. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, full EAF, subdivision plat, and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board, located at the Phillips Town Town Hall Annex, 2 Cedar Street, behind the Town Hall, Cold Spring, New York, between 8:30 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, dated at Phillips Town, New York, on this third day of January 2018. Andy Morante, Chairman.
Thanks, Tara.
Thank you. Glennon Watson from Beatty and Watson. I'm here tonight with Ulysses Lisiaga, who is the owner's representative. Richard O'Rourke, attorney for the project. Steve Gross, environmental planner. It's been a long time coming, but I'll just go through the plan.
Steve, one, bring that close.
The project started out as a 33 acre, a 33 lot subdivision on approximately 90 acres. There's been several iterations early in the process. It became a, the first conservation subdivision, and there's been a significant amount of work done in a conservation analysis. Ended in findings that the land is worth preserving. Under that program, we have an obligation to preserve approximately 155 acres of the property. The entire property is 210 acres. Route 9 is up at the northwest corner of the map, and the property, the proposed entrance to the property is next to the former PEMCORP building, or Studio 9 is there, a couple of other people there. It's just a little south of J. Mark Jewelers. Intend to construct a new road that goes up the hill onto the property. Through the core of the property, we want to develop 25 single-family residential lots that are located through the core of the property and partially around Omar Pond. The subdivision grew from the original 89 acres. It grew with a 20 acre piece, and it drew with a 30 acre piece, and I don't know exactly what the numbers are, and grew with a 55 acre piece in order to provide a stable forest for the project and to assure that there would be some significant preservation of the land. The, there are three ways into the property, three physical way, actually two physical ways into the property. One from East Mountain Road North, which is the driveway to the former Frazenda House, and one from the extension of Horton Road on the south, and that was an open area development for a couple of lots that were approved several years ago that have not been built. There is a driveway off of East Mountain Road that goes to a lot, but that was never built. The lot was approved, but the property was never built. The parcel was never improved. We, the plan calls for the collection of sewage into a common system that will be treated in a common septic system and run by a corporation that's set up specifically for that purpose. There will be an equestrian center for 40 horses, paddocks, barn, all the facilities there. We looked at each of the environmental impacts that you identified and submitted a rather lengthy, full environmental assessment form. I think we've added to it as recently as last month. It talks about the health of the lake, what we'll do to protect the lake. It talks about the sewage treatment, where it's located, what the testing was with regard to the sewage treatment. It recognizes that we've used the flatter areas of the site. The design has changed. I think, I went through, I think the design has changed about 10 different times in response. It's probably changed about 13 or 14 different times as it developed, I think, since we've been here. We've had 10, I think it's nine or 10 changes in the plan. Probably the most significant of which is, there were, there is an old farm road that comes up and services the house that Joan Ellison lived in, the former Omar house. It continues through the property, this brown line going up through the property. When we had the historic architecture, architectural historian look at the property, she determined that this was a, it was a feature that was worth improving and worth protecting. So, we redesigned it so that the original design called for just using that road, which would be, obviously, it's the path of least resistance. It's the one the farmers took 150 years ago. But in order to preserve it, we worked the roads around it so that we could preserve that, and it would be left in its present state, except for a couple of places where we have to cross it. We originally had a 100-foot buffer around the property, around the lake. We've increased that to 140 feet around the pond, and we've, there was been some criticism about the ability to protect that 40 feet, because it was always going to be part of the individual lots. But we've come to the conclusion that we can move the lot line back, so the buffer that will be in the preserved area will be 140 feet deep instead of 100 feet deep. One of the earlier plans had a road coming in, extended Horton Road through the property. On your first site visit, you'll remember, there were some neighbors there that said they didn't want any traffic on Horton Road, so we agreed. We've taken that out of the mix 80, 85, or 90 percent. The 5 percent is that we are leaving it as an emergency access. It's, the road is built, and we think that it's, it certainly would be a beneficial emergency access here, but it would also be a beneficial emergency access for Horton Road if that ever got blocked. Now, I know that the bridge on Mill Road is now open and it's passable, but if you've driven down it, it's not the most desirable road to drive a fire truck down. So, we do plan to block that access. We'll block that access with, there's a number of ways to do it. You could have a crash gate that can be knocked down if it needs to be pushed over by a fire truck to get through. We can give the fire truck a key to the gate. We intend to block it, but we think that it's a safety feature to have it there and be available. But I think you have to recognize that it's actually a two-way safety feature. It works for people on both sides of that point. There is, this driveway for the former Frazenda House at the north end will also provide an alternate means out, although it's steep, but it's passable, and it's relatively new, relatively new driveway. We are proposing a dry hydrant, the only, besides the program to treat the lake that we talk about in the EAF, we also talk about installing a dry hydrant. We think it'll be at the north end of the lake. If fire company feels differently, we'll certainly be willing to look at an alternate location. But a dry hydrant is essentially a straw that you put in the lake, so that fire pumper truck can come, hook onto the hydrant, and suck the water out of the lake if they need it. So, lots will each be approximately one acres, I said. They will each have their own well, and the EAF talks about the water supply, and the, there are a couple of different reports that this is a high-yield area, so we, and our recharge rate for this whole piece of property is significant. It's, I think, it's several times the anticipated demand. With that, I think I've kind of covered the highlights, and I don't know if you want to say, do you want?
Yeah. So, I just want to add, Ulysses Lisiaga, I am representing the owners and the developers. And, well, we all know each other, but I just want to kind of tell the, all the audience that has not been as closely following the process of the project, or the public that are here. We've been working on this for about four years, and like Glenn said, we have gone through about 14 iterations, and we see the planning board as our partners. Without their help guiding our design process, we would not be where we are. We also have the help of a law firm that has guided the process and just making sure that we do things according to the law. We have been helped with, for, we have gotten their help for about 18 months, I believe. And just for the public that is not familiar with the whole process, we, again, we have responded to the board's comments, and we have worked with the HHLT, Highland Land Trust. We have worked with them since Andy Shmar was there. We had a couple of meetings with him, and in response to some of his comments, we actually bought more land, and we have, just to get you up to date, we bought 55 extra acres because the comment was that we were fragmenting the forest, and in those meetings came up that if we added more land to the development, that would be gifted in perpetuity to the trust. That would help. We also bought an extra piece of land here, the commercial land, to avoid getting close to the creek. All those are environmental concerns that we're, that we've been addressing. We have hired the help of about 12 different consultants from experts in reptiles, and amphibians, and aquatic life.
Cultural resources.
Cultural resources, archaeologists. So, we have worked endless amounts of hours on this, and I know that most of you might not be familiar with the entire process, but it has taken four years, and six different pieces of land, and a lot of hard work. Just to give you. Just to give you a little background on who I am, my wife and I about in 2002 bought a piece of land up the mountain and built a house. We have five children. We have avid horse riders and that's why the equestrian part of it. And we just love the area and want to do some work and do good for the area. We, I mean, something that I've said before is that we intend this development as some sort of weekend community, just the way we use it. We live in the city and we enjoy coming to the country and riding our horses. And that's how we ambition this development. We have been supportive of the community for about 15 years. We pay our taxes. We support the local school and our kids don't use the services here. So this is the idea that we have for this project. I think Glenn gave all the technical and specifics and I don't know if, yeah.
All right, I'll add a little bit. Steve Gross, Hudson Highlands Environmental Consulting. And I just wanted to add a little bit about the conservation analysis and the impact that had on the development of the plan. When we looked at this property, we did find it have, it had many features that were worthy of preserving. Right at the bat, the one large portion up in this area was the area of the property that had the most native vegetation, was dominated by the most native vegetation versus down in this area, which had historically been utilized and disturbed and contained many, many exotic invasive species throughout the whole area where we are proposing development. This is pretty much pristine. We wanted to leave it that way. It is also the area that is closest to Fonstock and could serve to preserve as much unfragmented forest as possible. There are some homes along this area that do have a fragmenting influence and the road does, but this is the largest block that we could preserve that would have an impact of preserving unfragmented forest. It also joins to other forests in this area. We also made sure to preserve all of the hydrologic features, all the streams, the wetlands. There is a stream system that comes down the hill in this direction, flows into Omar Pond, flows out of Omar Pond through a dam, goes offsite, wraps around again, and flows into Clove Creek, which also flows off the property then back on again. And we have endeavored with the preservation to make sure that we have left all of that untouched. We are not impacting in any way whatsoever any of the stream's wetlands or the pond. We've left large buffers. The closest buffer, the closest we get is on the pond itself with 140 feet and that only goes to a backyard. The practical buffer to the houses is even greater than that. We've also made sure to preserve wildlife corridors. The most important wildlife corridor is the same hydrologic system coming down and going through here offsite and down to the Clove Creek. That is where you'll have amphibians, reptiles, small mammals with movement going, following along the creek and then going between the pond and the Clove Creek. The Clove Creek and the wetland around that is also part of what is in the preserved area. As far as the cultural resources, we identified a barn in this vicinity that is, dates back to the very early 1800s, about 1810 to 1825, around that range. And it's a well-preserved example. Part of it has been converted, one end of it has been converted to a residence. The rest is still in its original condition. There is another home over here that was built in the 1930s and retains all of the, from the outside, it doesn't look like anything exciting, but once you get inside, the inside has all of the features, the woodwork, chestnut woodwork and fixtures and everything that are exactly the way they were when it was first installed. So we made sure to preserve that as well. There's another house over here, which is, which was built around the same time period, but is in a much greater state of disrepair and has been remodeled over the years and has lost its integrity. That is, has been proposed to be removed. There's another foundation over here, which has just, the house has just collapsed and that also was deemed to not be significant. In addition to the barn and the house, as Glenn already said, we identified the old road, which from what we could tell was the main thoroughfare prior to there being Route Nine. And we believe that that was the main thoroughfare around the same time the barn was built, so around 1800. It has beautiful stone walls lining either side. And when my group first got involved, that was proposed as being the spine road for the subdivision. And Ulysses immediately took our advice for us to preserve that and basically make it a linear park behind the houses. That'll also preserve a secondary wildlife corridor of movement north to south through the property. I think that pretty much sums up, you know, so, oh, and the other thing is that we've also made sure to preserve steep slopes in this area, over here and over here, not from the point of view of them being a valuable resource, but as a constraint in making sure that we did not create any environmental problems by development on the steep slopes. I think that pretty much sums it up. Glenn? Yes, we're done then. Okay.
Anyone else, anyone else from the applicant? Mr. O'Rourke?
Well, if I may, just, just. Good evening. My name is Richard O'Rourke. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Keenan Bean, PC. We have offices in White Plains and in Fishkill. I would just respectfully ask that when you address the board, if you would just state your name clearly. We have a court stenographer here who is transcribing this verbatim, so it'd be very helpful for us. Thank you.
Initial comments from the board before we turn it to the audience? Anyone? Kim? No. Okay, the audience, as Mr. O'Rourke mentioned, please state your name and address. Open it to the audience.
Is there any on the list?
All right. Well, can you read it?
Catherine Remick, 3315 Route Nine. No? Okay. Richard Nairn. So if you'd like to, Cecilia, is there a mic you can use?
Yes, this one.
Okay. So if you want to come, yeah, we're, this is being recorded for television, so it's good to have it.
Video public record.
That's right.
I'm Richard Nairn. I live on 36 Horton Road. I've lived there for, I think, going on 26 years now and we've seen a lot, quite a bit up there in that time. My concern tonight is the magnitude of this project and the stormwater runoff and what is going to happen. I'm a little unclear, is there going to be a retention pond, Glenn, or for the stormwater?
We're looking to infiltrate. It's a possibility, but we're looking to infiltrate.
Looking to infiltrate?
Correct.
All right. So all that stormwater from all the streets and potentially from roofs of houses, you're looking to infiltrate in through the ground?
Then we don't have any choice but to take care of the stormwater that's below.
Okay. Now, normally in construction and projects of this magnitude, you have retention ponds, as you know. Retention ponds are certainly designed to overflow when need arises, when we get excessive rains. We've witnessed that already over Glassbury quite a few times. And my concern is that I don't want to see that happen again with the magnitude of this I want to remind this board also that Clove Creek Corridor is a protected creek. I don't know if a lot of you know that. But this is very serious to the Clove Creek Corridor. Honestly, I don't see, with the amount of water, I don't see how you're going to infiltrate that in through the ground without some sort of overflow. You know, you could question all day long and say, well, we're going to put in culvert drains here and culvert drains over there and we're going to divert the water. But the fact of the matter is the water still has to go somewhere. So where's it going to go eventually? Clove Creek. It's going to happen. It's the fact of the matter. It's going to happen. It's going to hit that creek. You all know it as well as I do. So I think, you know, the magnitude of this project seriously needs to be looked at as far as the number of houses. I think the board really needs to pay attention to this stormwater issue and what is really going to happen here in long term. And just so everybody knows, the outlet pipe for that pond, that by the way heads back out onto the southern part of Horton Road, that outlet pipe is only about a 12, 14-inch diameter pipe. That's it. So, you know, I don't know, when you get excessive storms, how much more water's going to go into that pond? How much is that going to take? It could potentially blow out Horton Road, which we've seen happen already. Hurricane Irene totally blew out the whole backside of Horton Road. The amount of water that came down off that mountain, you people have no idea, the amount of water that comes off that mountain. I've seen it. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much for your time. And I do strongly suggest that the board really spends a lot of time with this stormwater issue and how it's really going to be dealt with. Thank you for your time.
Next person, Toshi Yano.
Hello, I'm Toshi Yano. I live at 61 Horton Road. I don't know if I'm given like a time allotment. I have a letter from a neighbor to read who can't make it tonight. But I just want to start first with my own comments.
Could I just ask you that letter, because we've received several letters today.
Okay, it's from Cecilia Imray.
That's why I want to see, there's no need to read it.
Okay.
We'll enter it in the record.
We'll read it into the record then, okay. Did you receive a letter from the Hudson Highlands Land Trust as well?
With several.
Okay, because I understand now that they don't, they're not going to approve the conservation easement that the owners are seeking. Is that correct?
That's the last letter.
That you've received, okay.
If changes are not made to their.
Changes are not made to satisfy them.
To their satisfaction.
Okay, so that's good to know. I guess I'll start by saying as a professional, I'm a horticulture manager on an 80-acre estate in Westchester County. The estate has a zoo and gardens. And so what I'm looking at, but it's a one-house property. So what I'm looking at is, is it 25 houses, is that correct? 25 houses on a, this space is about, what, 80 acres? Is that correct?
200 acres.
Just this space here with a, this is how many? 55, you said? So this is about 100 and something, 25 on 100 and something over here? Is that about right?
That sounds about right.
If you want, perhaps, I'm just suggesting, because we have a fourth tonight, but I can't, I want to make sure only one person is speaking at one time if you have a question perhaps. Or you could then direct someone over here to answer if he chooses to have this answered out and then we need the microphone.
Okay, sure. That makes plenty of sense. Okay, so I'm looking at 25 houses on, where the houses are, it looks like approximately 90 acres. So where I'm coming from, we have a pesticide regimen. I understand there's going to be a pesticide regimen here and probably fungicide, you know, all kinds of pesticides and animal management, animal medicine, steroids, all that kind of stuff. We have to deal with federal laws there because we're right next to a reservoir. There's a lot that we have to go through to have one house on 80 acres with maybe 80 animals, mostly birds, I should add, not large mammals. But, you know, my concern basically is living on Horton Road, coming from a situation like that, which we treat very seriously with one house, I'm imagining 25 houses with 25 separate pesticide regimens for their 25 separate lawns. You know, also waste management treatment over here for 40 houses, sorry, for 40 horses. And, you know, we truck off like two 10-yard containers every couple of days for the animal waste. Where, you know, you're going to truck that through this long winding road or potentially through that road onto here and then come out onto Route Nine, which is already pretty traffic-heavy. It seems like a lot. And so I would just second my neighbor who just spoke. It seems like there's some environmental assessments that need to be done, especially with regard to any kind of pesticide regimen, animal treatment or animal medicine regimen, and that those should be made public if they haven't already. I'm sorry, I'm not fully up to date on this. If there are some, I'd love to know about them. Are there any?
There is a environmental assessment form that's sitting right here that's about 1,000 pages. And there's a conservation analysis that's been submitted, it's been on file with the planning board for the past several months, so. And that addresses herbicides, pesticides, manure management plans developed by people that have expertise in those particular areas.
Thank you, I appreciate your answer. It's good to know that you guys are obviously professional about it. I still, you know, obviously have some concerns about the potential emergency entrance on Horton Road for my own personal reasons. Also concerns about horse trailers coming in and out of this hairpin turn onto Route Nine, causing more traffic. You know, how many horses are going to be kept on property, how often they're going to move off property? If they're, you know, the creek as well, as my neighbor mentioned, is, I understand, if my understanding is correct, it sort of starts up at Glenwood, which already has animal waste problems. And I know that there's been some controversy in the past about how they treat those. So if we're talking about animal waste issues from Glenwood coming down into the creek and then again being hit again by animal waste, potential animal waste issues and stormwater issues coming into the creek, it seems like there's a lot, the creek is sort of being compromised at several, at the source, but then again down here, as well as, you know, from wastewater from, you know, off the mountain, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, I've probably said enough. I, you know, I just would like to sort of express supreme caution about this and say that, like I would, I will look at the 1,000-page environmental assessment that you guys have done as much as I can in my free time, but I, yeah, I would just like to express my concern, extreme concern.
Just to let you know, let everyone know, all the issues that have been produced, all the documents that have been produced are public record and they are available.
That's correct. Phillips Town.
That's the town hall, building department.
Okay, thank you.
In the bill, want to log down?
Yes.
EAF.
So this material is also available digitally.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next person is Richard Butensky.
Hi, I'm Richard Butensky on East Mountain Road South. Congratulations to get to this point in your development. You'll be my neighbor one way or another, I assume, eventually.
Already, yes.
Okay. My, I'm just, my main question is how the density is calculated. I'm not necessarily. I've not necessarily, I don't understand exactly how the calculation comes to be. I mean, I've read the law and I, as, my understanding is that the steep slope and wetlands are not included in any calculation. And that it's done, it's based on the developable land to begin with. And am I mistaken there?
Glenn, would you address that briefly?
The calculation, there is a calculation that deducts the constrained land and it gives you a density, once you deduct the constrained land, you make certain allowances for roads and then there's a density factor that you divide it into the remaining land and that gives you a potential lot count. But the lot count is, was done by my office, it was done by Mr. Gaynor's office, we're with one unit, which at this stage in the game is fine. But the law has a secondary way of doing it, which is to actually develop a subdivision with a certain density that's specified in the law and basically do a plan of a conventional type subdivision. Typically, you're supposed to do one or the other. We did the one, which is calculation, because frankly, it's less expensive. And what board asked us to do the other, we did the other, which actually yielded more lots than the first calculation. So, but we're working off of a calculation that was done by both our office and by Mr. Gaynor's office. We have one more. I think we both recognize that at this stage that one is a very close, and we're going to ultimately have to prove that at the end of this. And we may lose a lot as a result, or we may not.
Excuse me, one second. I just want to add to that, that this is a conservation subdivision. So, Richard, if you're looking at the zoning and looking at a conventional subdivision and wondering why there are so many houses, it's because this is intended as a conservation subdivision, which operates under different criteria.
Yes, I did understand that, but what I, my understanding was that you're getting credit, that you don't necessarily get credit for preserving land that is undevelopable. Is that not, is that not correct?
That's a question, isn't it?
That is a question. So that was the part that I'm questioning. I understand the concept of the conservation subdivision, but I question the count if, unless I'm misunderstanding something. So it seems that you understand what I'm saying. I'm hoping that the rest of you understand what I'm saying. I'm not wanting to take any rights away from my neighbor. I'm just looking to make sure that whatever's done is done correctly for this and the future. Thank you.
Is it Laura?
One second.
Is it Laura?
Laura McCormick? Laura Mc...
Callan?
17.
17 Horton Road.
No, not Laura.
What is it?
I'm Lana Canilis's husband. We live at Joe Spina, we live at 17 Horton Road. You've addressed the emergency access from the development onto Horton Road. How are you going to manage the construction activity, vehicles transversing the development
We're intending to make the entry from Route 9 first and build the entrance up from Route 9. We know from the previous application that when Lyons wanted to put a soil mine in there, that we have about 80 feet of gravel and building material in there that will be able, and will have a lot of spoil from building the road up from Route 9. So we'll work our way in from Route 9, we'll get to this developable area, where we'll put a, we'll put a plant and we'll be able to mix our own Item 4 and subbase material for the road to minimize traffic out onto Route 9. We don't anticipate any construction materials coming in from Horton Road. Horton Road is a very difficult road. There's a point where, and I'm sure you're more aware than I, but there's a point where any kind of big truck is going to have trouble getting around there. Mill Road is not much better, if it's, I think it's a little worse, actually. So there's no advantage to us coming in there. And there's no advantage for us coming up from East Mountain Road North. So we're going to work our way in from Route 9. When we get up there, we'll have a stable area from which to develop the rest of the property.
Well, that's the preference in reality, how you prevent a construction vehicle taking a shortcut down and around back to Horton.
I think we'll have a lot of police along the route of Route Horton Road, and if we do that, I think we'll be reported and we'll, plus there'll be inspection fees paid to the town to make sure that we don't...
Why don't you give us a shot? You've talked about a crash gate when the complex is completed, that's great. Will there be a construction gate that prevents construction vehicles?
If it'd make you, the neighborhood happy, we'll put up the crash gate first so that it doesn't, construction gate implies traffic through there with construction. We're not going to have that, so we're not going to have a construction gate there.
Okay, so I guess the answer to the question is that construction vehicles will be prevented from transversing Horton Road.
Yes.
That's the answer to the question. Thank you.
Don't want to give me two of these.
Can I just ask if you're going to use the microphone over there? They call the closing sheet now.
Next person, Andy Galler.
Hi, I'm Andy Galler. For transparency, I am a member of the Phillips Town Conservation Board. We have reviewed this project as it stands right now in advisory capacity. I am going to talk for myself personally, not for the Conservation Board. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect, I'm not a land planner, but I have taken several courses on conservation subdivisions. This is not a conservation subdivision, not at all. It's a very well-planned subdivision at preliminary stage, but it's not a conservation subdivision. Why? One area that's being conserved...
I'm sorry, Andy, can you just tell us where you live?
Oh, yes. I live about a half a mile from the Westchester border in the most southern part of this town on Old Albany Post Road. Okay? So this will not affect my property values at all. But I feel very, very strongly that because this is the first conservation subdivision to be looked at in this town, that it's done properly. And I also appreciate that you and all your consultants have done a lot of work on this and spent a lot of resources. But I will say it is not a conservation subdivision because while I agree that this is an area of importance, so is this, and most particularly this. And while the pond and the wetland system here is somewhat compromised, it is functioning and it's an important piece of land. And I would have thought, if this was being laid out, that really the only inclusion other than perhaps doing restoration work would have maybe put a clubhouse or something, just one thing here so that everybody would have access to the pond for passive recreation. But that's not the case. It's not the case at all. You know, in terms of 100 or 140-foot buffer, that's always been a compromise in wetland laws that exist in towns, mainly because you're dealing with much smaller pieces of property. In many situations, you need a buffer that's far bigger than 100. So that's what I have to say and thank you.
They don't want to speak, is that what that's supposed to mean?
Yeah, yeah. Cheryl, Christian.
The next one, Cheryl. Christian Baum.
27 Horton Road, most of my neighbors have been asking questions.
You're on the list, you don't have to, okay. Sam Isley. Isali.
Gentlemen, ladies, I'd like to change pace a bit, in fact. First of all, if we're picking up this mic properly, I want to declare my own fiduciary interest in this project. I do have a fiduciary interest in the project. If, in fact, I were sitting on your side of the table, I would need to recuse myself. But in fact, I'm not. I'm an advocate for this project. So the project has been four years in the making. I've lived it directly, and I do want to declare my support for it. I believe it's been environmentally sensitively designed. I've watched that in process. I've watched the various iterations, both to make the project straightforward better and also to satisfy the various regulations of the laws and the requests of the multiple interests that have looked at this project. It will bring major benefits to the community. The equestrian center will be nice. It will be a benefit here. There will be 25 nice homes built, well-designed, well-built. There will be countless jobs. I have to believe that's perhaps the most important part of this development. Now, the community set the stage for this some years ago, and you could perhaps tell me, but the laws changed to encourage conservation subdivisions. I understand from others here tonight that this is the first such effort to respect those laws. So much has been done, lots of consultants, lots of architectural work, and I believe it satisfies all parties. Now, there will be people that have opinions, people that will have negative opinions as well as positive, but I believe that the regulations and law has been respected. This is going to be a fantastic project and I again urge you to approve it. Thank you. My name is Sam Heisely, Mr. President. Thank you.
Alexis Lowry.
Hi, I live at 130 Horton Road.
Will you speak? Are you serious?
Hi, I live at 130 Horton Road. My name is Alexis Lowry and I just want to reiterate my concerns about, one, 40 horses is a lot of poop. And so what's going to happen in terms of the waste management? I'm concerned about the Horton Road being an access road. It's a small road, kids play on it, it's not built for large vehicles to be passing through regularly and a narrow hairpin turn is not also ideal for large vehicles to be passing through. So I'm just concerned about where and how traffic will be moving. And most importantly, our water, what happens to the pond when there are 25 houses leaching with no control over the chemical, chemicals that get used in the yards and in and around the houses filtering into the pond.
How you doing? I'm Joe Hyatt, I'm the Assistant Chief of the North Highlands Fire Department. We are neither here to support or not support this project, we're here with some questions about the project. On December 26th, we got a packet about this project, asking us to go over it, see if we had any concerns. On December 31st, our Fire Matic officers met, we came up with some questions, but we can't address those questions until we go to our Fire Matic Board, the Commissioners, at which time we did on January 11th. So I understand, you know, the meeting was only, we've only had about a week to look at these questions after the Commissioners' meeting. Some of the questions that we have, I don't know if you want to answer them as we go individually, or if you want to kind of let me go through everything and, you know, answer them all at the end, that's fine, so either way. One of the first questions we have is going to be the roads throughout the project. Are they going to be dirt roads or blacktop roads?
The main road up from Route 9, up in through the middle of the property and down to the equestrian center, and the turnaround will be paved. The side roads will be run up in gravel.
With the gravel roads, our heaviest truck is probably about 70,000 pounds. It's a 3,500-gallon tanker. If we have to have a ladder truck in there, I don't know what the ladder truck up in Dutchess County that we use weighs. Are these roads going to hold these pieces of apparatus? And what are the width of the, what's the width of the road going to be? Because we can't have two pieces of apparatus passing each other on soft shoulders, that's how we lose trucks.
Yes, we've, I have to, frankly, I can't answer the question with regard to the load, but I'll certainly make a note of it and we will, we'll make sure that the cross-section of the road is designed to hold, to hold the trucks. As far as the movements of the trucks, if you take a look at the EAF, there is a significant portion of the property was done to prove the turning radiuses of the trucks. We, in fact, did call the fire department. We were told that the biggest truck you use is the one that comes from Rombaut. And we use that as our model to get in and out of the, out of the...
For the turning radiuses.
For the turning radiuses. And we have demonstrations of that turning ability at all of the intersections.
Okay, now, do they involve any, say, three or four-point turns? Or can we make these turns...
They're all, they're all...
A normal turn?
Normal turns.
Okay. Do we know what any of the grade slopes on these roads are going to be?
The maximum grade is coming up in is 12%.
12%, okay. Let's see here. All right, so extension roads that you're talking about, are they going to be maintained during the wintertime? Are they going to be plowed? Are we going to be able to access them during the wintertime? The reason I ask, the quarry pond development did put a road in as part of our requirement off Horton Road. That road is not maintained during the wintertime. We can't get in off of that road as an emergency access road. So these two roads that you're going to be putting in, are they going to be maintained for fire apparatus, ambulance, whatever it would be in case we have to get in there?
Yes, this, the answer is yes. I would qualify that only to say that if none of these houses are built and there's no houses on, say, this cul-de-sac road because they were built here first on this other cul-de-sac road, then perhaps that won't be plowed in the winter. But there will be a homeowners association, there will be mandatory dues, and there will be a plowing, a organization in charge to make sure that happens.
Okay. Now, before I get into water supply, you've mentioned a couple times tonight, crash gate. I can tell you that myself, and I'm sure my chief will back me up 100% on this, we are not in favor of crash gates. We do not drive half a million dollar pieces of fire apparatus through gates. It's got to be a locked gate, construction gate, whatever it is, we're not driving these fire trucks through these gates because we can't go back to explain to the taxpayers that we need money to fix a truck because we had to drive through a gate. That just doesn't, that doesn't fly with us.
We'll be happy to supply the gate that you'd like to have.
Okay. Now, as far as water supply, you mentioned a dry hydrant on the pond. When we put the quarry pond development together, we also had piping throughout the entire road system and hydrants throughout. They're dry hydrants that we pressurize from the pond if need be. Is that something that you guys have looked into doing?
We've not looked into that.
Okay. As far as the pond goes, as a dry hydrant, one of my biggest concerns, I fished this pond as a kid, as a teenager, I know this pond is not very deep. Summertime, lily pads are completely shown throughout almost the entire pond, which tells me that the pond is no more than 10, 12 feet deep at most. Where my concern is, is if you put a dry hydrant in this pond for us, like they did at Quarry Pond, we were assured when they built that... at Quarry Pond, we were assured when they built that Quarry Pond, that the water level would not drop. That water level, at the best wet season, is probably six, I'm going to say at least six feet lower than it originally was, before that development was put in there. So, my concern is, once this development gets put in there, we don't know if it will and we don't know if it won't. But if this pond drains out, and that's our water source, like Quarry Pond is, which is a dredged pond, which is a lot deeper, our dry hydrant would have to be buried at least five feet from the top of the water. If this development goes in and this thing drops five feet, now we're out of luck. We don't have a water source. My biggest concern is going to be a water source for development of this magnitude. Excuse me. Has that been looked into at all?
No, it, not, not beyond the dry hydrant, no.
Okay. And then, the development itself, have they looked into possibly putting sprinklers in these houses? I know it is not a town mandate, but it is something that would help if they had sprinklers in these houses. If, God forbid, this pond ever did dry up, the sprinklers would go off into wells. It's absolutely a benefit. It knocks down fires quickly. It would help with your homeowner's insurance. Again, I know it is an added cost to each individual house, but it is something that has been proven to save lives. We can all look back, a week ago, we had a fire on Route 301 at the group home. And I can tell you right now as a fact that if that building had sprinklers in it, there would not have been a life lost. Something to look into, sprinkler systems. Because we don't have the adequate water supply sitting in our firehouse. If, God forbid, this pond dries up, it's going to take a while to get to any of our closest water sources to get water into this place. We only have one tanker in our firehouse. It's 3,500 gallons. On an initial attack, you're looking at 1,000 gallons out of an engine, 3,500 gallons out of a tanker. Don't know how long it's going to take for our mutual aid departments to get here, and then where are we going to get our closest water source from? These are some questions that we do have, that we would like to see if we could get answered before the Board approves or disapproves this project. Again, like I said, we did not get this until December 26th. So, I'm not trying to drag this on for you guys, but there are questions that we like to get answered before you guys approve it. Thank you.
Could you just submit those in writings, just so we make sure we have them all and they all get answered? If you could just hand them in to, when you get a chance.
Michelle Smith.
Michelle Smith, Hudson Highlands Land Trust. First of all, I know this has been a very long process for you all. I wanted to thank you all, and I know everybody on the planning board has done a lot of work. Everybody for the applicant has done a lot of work. We've done a lot of work. We've read thousands of pages, and we've made many comments, many of the things that have come up tonight. We've been, from day one, and this project dating back to our first comments in 2014, we've been very concerned about the water resources related to this property. Obviously, we have the pond. We just heard more about the pond. We have the tributaries to Clove Creek. We have Clove Creek nearby. This property sits on the Clove Creek Aquifer Overlay District, and it's just hard to look at this picture and say that there's not going to be any significant impact on the water resources of the property. To speak to Andy Gallow's point, we agree, this is not, we, this is not what we would think of as a conservation subdivision. A conservation subdivision is really, the intent of the conservation subdivision was really to create significant conservation value relative to a conventional subdivision. And there's quite a number of reasons why this is not the case here. As a gentleman mentioned earlier, when you look at the conserve space, it's primarily steep slopes and wetlands. And so, in order to meet the open space requirement of the code for a conservation subdivision, all the developer has to do is buy developable land and buy adjacent steep slopes and wetlands to cover the open space need, and, and that then gives them the ability, under the existing code, to, that gives them the ability to develop much more than they would be allowed to develop under a conventional subdivision. So, steep slopes and wetlands are already protected by the zoning code of Phillips Town. The other thing that's really important here is that most of this property lies in the open space overlay district. So if you were developing a conventional subdivision in the open space overlay district, you would only be allowed one house per 15 acres. So you would end up with no more than 10 houses on this. You would not be able to develop an equestrian facility, commercial equestrian facility, with 40 horses. So, and, and you wouldn't have eight houses wrapped around a pond. So what we have here is, we have 25 houses, one acre per house, and we have a 40-horse equestrian facility, a commercial equestrian facility. None of that would be allowed in a conventional subdivision. We'd have one house per 15 acres in the open space overlay district. We'd probably have maybe eight or nine houses. We'd have one or two anywhere near the pond. And we firmly believe that the land trust, you would have a better conservation outcome if you had a conventional subdivision on this property. So, this is to the point that we made in our January 12 letter, which is, whenever we, whenever we look at holding a conservation easement, a conservation easement for us requires resources to negotiate the easement, to monitor the easement, and then to enforce the easement. In this particular case, so we always look at, we're going to devote lots of these, lots of our resources to the conservation easement. It, you know, that's a cost to us, so it better have a lot of conservation value that comes with it. So, so that, so when we go to look at the, that conservation analysis, first of all, we say, does this conservation easement, or does the act that leads to the conservation easement, give us a lot of conservation value relative to what could be developed, relative to, to how the property could be developed? So, for a conservation subdivision, we would compare the conservation subdivision to a conventional subdivision and say, do we have a significantly better conservation outcome? And here, the case for, for the reasons I just went through, the answer to that would be no. In addition, when we think about the resources it would take to negotiate, monitor, and enforce that conservation easement in what is really very fragmented open space, so the fact that, through the zoning code, the, the development plan has enabled 25 one-acre units, spread sprawling right across the property, wrapped around the pond, with a large commercial equestrian facility, we, we first of all think, well, we've got like one, two, three, four, you know, three or four different segments of open space that would need to be monitored and included as part of, part of an easement or four easements. And then, as part of the open space, we have this equestrian facility. We've got 40 horses roaming around. We've got pesticides being applied in the open space. That's being, that's part of the easement. And all of that makes it really hard to monitor and enforce the easement, and every one of those 25 houses borders the open space. So you're dealing with possible encroachments from 25 different parties, plus the equestrian facility. And, and I would say, for these eight houses around the pond, encroachment is almost irresistible, because your property is so close to the pond. So, you know, you're right here, and just over there is the pond, and that's part of the open space, that's part of the easement, and it's, it's hard to believe that people aren't going to be building trails or, you know, putting their furniture out there and so forth. So, yes, that will be part of the agreement, but that they're not supposed to do that. But actually, monitoring that and enforcing that is a very heavy burden for the easement holder. So when we add up all of that, we, we, we say, well, we've got a very low conservation value. We've got a huge amount of resources that would be dedicated to negotiating, monitoring, and enforcing the easement, and therefore, it's an easement that we could not take. We, we just don't have the resources to dedicate to something that doesn't have the conservation value that we would hope for under the conservation subdivision provisions. So we wanted to let you know that as soon as possible, so that the, if this plan does go ahead, so that the, the town can find an alternative holder of the easement. We don't have a monopoly on easements. So, you know, from our perspective, most of what's happened here, this is a precedent-setting subdivision, most of what's happened here is, as we, you know, Joel Russell was here at the December meeting, who's, for people's benefit, was the drafter of the Phillips Town zoning code and very involved in the discussions around conservation subdivisions. There are a lot of flaws in the zoning code, so this is not really, you know, it's not anyone's fault, it just happened. And there is now a big disconnect between the, what the comprehensive plan wanted to do or tried to do, and how it tried to protect space in the open space overlay area, and what actually ended up in the zoning code, and that there are loopholes, such as, you can take developable land and then go buy a whole bunch of steep slopes next door, and then you can develop quite a lot of property that you couldn't develop in a conventional subdivision in the open space overlay district. And so, you know, we, we think that, we're very worried about this. We have actually seen other plans for conservation subdivisions that may be coming before you in the future, that do exactly what this does. Flat, developable land, buy steep slopes next door, develop, you know, 20 to 30 houses on that flat, developable land in the open space overlay district. So we know more is in the pipeline. Word gets around the development community quickly, and we continue to be very worried about this precedent-setting case. And so we're very, we, we would now focus our attention on trying to get the zoning code fixed. And I'll just leave a couple of other comments. You've already heard my comments about us not taking the, the conservation easement with this plan. For the water resources, if you, if, if this plan does go ahead, we do recommend, we've heard many comments already tonight on the water resources, we do recommend that there be triggers set on the water quality, that there be water quality testing while construction is, is underway, for the, for the groundwater sources, the surface water sources, and if the triggers are exceeded, then construction stops and the plans revisited. And then the other thing that I mentioned in my letter, in our letter, was that we, I, I don't recall ever seeing an analysis of the number of horses. So I don't know, if the developer had said, we're putting 100 horses, I don't know if that would have been too many, if anyone would have, would have questioned it, but, you know, 40 seems like a lot. And I wish that there were more analysis on the carrying capacity of the land for, for the equestrian facility and the number of horses. And I think that's about it. So, thank you.
Next speaker, Erv Flynn.
I'm Erv Flynn, and I'm here in my capacity as the Chair of the Public Policy Committee of the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. I'm not going to repeat what our Executive Director, Michelle Smith, has just mentioned. We have, for a couple of years now, pressed the case that there is a serious problem with this plan relating to the circling of the pond with residential houses. A decade or so ago, I served as a member of the Zoning Advisory Committee of Phillips Town, and worked very closely with Joel Russell, who had been engaged to prepare a new zoning code to implement the comprehensive plan. When I got in touch with Joel and told him what was happening here, he was very concerned. And he wrote a letter, which was presented in December to the Planning Board, to point out what concerned him. And his points were similar to mine, and to what the land trust had been mentioning for some time, and that is, circling the pond with houses, and this is one of the principal assets that should be conserved, was unacceptable, and really inconsistent with the purpose of conservation subdivision provision. That provision had not been in the prior code. It was suggested by Joel Russell and our zoning advisory committee as something that would be a good addition to the code, because it was a means of achieving a better environmental outcome than a conservation, than a conventional subdivision. This plan does not do that, and we repeatedly said that, and we're disappointed to see that it essentially has, remains unchanged from the very beginning. I understand why the developer might want to proceed with such a plan. I'm not saying that the developer isn't doing what a developer does. They do, and that's understandable. But I do feel that it would be a very serious mistake for this plan to proceed as proposed, and thereby set a precedent for the future. The, you know, what happens to this property is serious in itself, but it becomes magnified if it is taken as a precedent for the future. And I know Joel Russell is concerned about that, and the land trust is very concerned about that. So I hope that this will not proceed with the units surrounding the pond, and I hope that something will be done to reduce the number of horses, which is much larger than any other horse facility in the town, and that therefore, the, as Michelle was pointing out, the measures will be taken to really deal with some of the serious omissions in this plan. If that happens, why, I think we would be very pleased. But if it doesn't happen, we'll be disappointed, and I hope that at least the Planning Board would make it clear that this project would not be an acceptable, or should never be referred to, as an appropriate precedent for any future conservation subdivision. I mention that because it has come to my attention recently that at least one, and perhaps more, real estate brokers in town are touting conservation subdivisions as a way to, by, to, to get more housing units in an area than conventional subdivisions would allow. And that was, and, and to, with an outcome that is actually adverse to the environment, and worse than would be a conventional subdivision. And I think it's very important that that not be allowed to hap, happen. So, first hope would- So first hope would be that we can correct the plan and bring it back so that it's appropriate plan. And if that doesn't happen, I think that at least should be clear that this is not to serve as a precedent for the future. Thank you.
David Hunter. Next speaker is David Hunter.
David Hunter, I'm a resident of Horton Road as well, with property that has frontage on Clove Creek. I just wanted to quickly echo the concerns of my neighbors with regards to the stormwater and animal waste runoff and its possible adverse effects on the Clove Creek aquifer. I know that there have been environmental assessments done, and you've obviously been doing your legwork, so I don't mean to be overly critical, it's just absolutely a concern for us. I feel like it's already been addressed, so I'm not going to go further into it beyond just echoing the concerns. Second, my concern is about the precedent-setting nature of this development, and that to me, having read the laws, I'm not an expert on the subdivision laws by any means, but it has struck me from the very beginning. I sent a letter to the board back in 2014 with the same sentiments, that it seems to fly in the face of the spirit of the law and the effect that it's meant to cluster the housing and leave for larger tracts of contiguous open space. And on the face of it, this, to me, just looks like a traditional subdivision that is getting allowances to, as has been stated previously, actually cram more houses onto the developable land. So I just would ask the board to really question whether or not 25 houses on the developable property is meeting the letter of the law and whether that's a precedent that we want to set for future subdivisions of this nature. Specifically, as a resident of Horton Road, I do want to address the emergency access. I live at the top of the hill, right by the hairpin turn that bends down, crosses Clove Creek. I have been living in that house for eight years, and I can't tell you how many close calls and accidents I've witnessed while I've been home and looking at that part of the road. There are delivery trucks that go down there every day, whether it's oil, gas, UPS, you name it, and residents coming up the road, and it's full of close calls. I can't tell you how many accidents actually happen, but there have been a number over the years that I've been in that house at that location. Glenn stated earlier that the road was not appropriate for construction vehicle traffic, which I would agree with that, and I believe his name was Mr. Hyatt from Hudson Highlands Fire Department, mentioned the road as not being a worthy access point for emergency vehicles. So I would question why there needs to be the emergency access point to the development if it's not an appropriate road to meet the requirements needed for construction traffic and emergency vehicle traffic, especially considering that corner, it's not really the place for a fire department truck to be racing down to get further into this property, especially since, once you cross Clove Creek with the bridge that's in serious disrepair already, and then it turns into a dirt road, and it becomes much harder to navigate back to where the access point to this property would actually be. So I'm not even, I'm skeptical that that needs to exist in the property if it doesn't meet the requirements that have been stated previously. Can I make one more point before you address it? My, one other concern would be the access from Route 9 with, not the traffic for the 25 houses necessarily, but any traffic related to the equestrian center and whether it's the vehicles to get the horses in and out or the waste matter in and out. I know when Glassbury Court was put in, obviously 9 was widened, there's a turn lane. Have there been considerations made on how the access point to your property would be made on Route 9? Are there going to be any changes, or is it just going to be as is? And I would question whether or not that will lead to further traffic problems. That's it. Thank you.
Just with regard to the emergency access, that's not an emergency, that's to get people out, not to get people in. So if you have a block on the road here, and you have a problem, people have to leave, they would go out that way. Or if you had a problem down where you are, and it, and you couldn't get out to Route 9 the normal way, you would have an alternate way to go. Now, I know Mill Road is now open, so I know that that's not as big a problem, but for the Lowry property, it is a problem, and it could be. So the idea of the emergency access is not to let fire trucks get in necessarily, although that might be the case. It would be a case when it was impossible to use the main road. So the standard for what you would do in an emergency is obviously different, at least to me. If you look at the environmental assessment form, there's a very thick study on the traffic, not only the turns for the fire truck, the turns for any, all the possible vehicles that are going to use the main roads or the side roads, all their turning radius is taken care of. The traffic was counted out here, and there were, there were analysis of what the traffic from this subdivision would do in several different scenarios. So it doesn't, at this point, it looks like it doesn't warrant anything further than a standard intersection.
With regards to the equestrian center, were it, I mean, I've heard the number 40 thrown out as horses. Is there a way to specifically cap that amount? Or a year from now, as the plans develop, say you decide that you want to have 60 horses on the property, what's to prevent that from being done? And the impact, which would then have been addressed when it was a much smaller facility? What's, I guess my question is, what's the restraint on the equestrian center that would prevent it from getting to the point where it would be too big, but then the problem with Route 9 traffic wouldn't have been addressed?
This center will be subject to, subject to Planning Board approval. You can't just go down to the Building Department and get an addition. So, and the size of, it's designed for 40, it's not designed for 60, so there would be an issue with bringing more horses in without doing further addition, an addition or enlarging it. There would also be a restriction in the conservation easement, no matter who holds it, with regard to what you could do in that area. So there are more, there is, there are several points where there would be controls on that.
Next speaker, Evan Thompson.
I'm the Park Manager for Fonstock and Hudson Highlands State Parks, which are on either side of this subdivision. I want to apologize to the board because we're kind of late to this party, but our Environmental Management Bureau in Albany just learned of this meeting yesterday, so I've got four pages of comments here, which I'm not going to read, but I want--
You will submit them for the record.
Yeah, so this is what I, just want to highlight a couple of things, the visual impacts we're concerned about from both Hudson Highlands and Fonstock. We know it can be seen from Schofield Ridge, it's mentioned in the AF. And it's also said in the AF that it'll only be a few hikers might see it. We all know that there's more than a few hikers up on Schofield Ridge, so we want to take a look at that. Also, Clove Creek comes out of Fonstock, goes through this subdivision, ends up back in Hudson Highlands, and eventually into Fishkill Creek, which are all in Hudson Highlands Park. So we want to really take a look at the, you know, water quality issues. And also, we're concerned about the cutting of trees and in the way they're cut because of recently, the Indiana bat, which is a federally listed species, was identified in Fonstock Park within five mile radius of this development, so we want to make sure that the tree cutting is done properly. But there's a lot of other things, so I just want to make sure that we'll have time to submit written comments. And who do we submit them to? We submit them to the Planning Board?
Yeah, Secretary.
All right, thank you.
Have no others on the list?
Sorry, if I may?
Okay, you're listening.
We have, well, thank you very much for all your questions and your concerns. We have used the neighbors' concerns to help our design, but we have, we do have a difference of opinion with some of the things that have come up with the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. And we prepared a very quick presentation with a few slides that show neighboring conditions that address a lot of the questions that have been raised in terms of density and in terms of water management. I think it's very relevant, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do every month and the long nights and everything that you guys do for us. Thank you.[1308.73][1308.73](pause)
Want to take a five-minute break? Dennis, Neil? Just take a five-minute break while they're setting up.
So when we started looking at the density, that, again, we went back and forth with the board and with our legal counsel, and also we encountered this problem about the law, that if we were following the law and the sentiment of the law or the law by the letter. But, so what we found in the neighboring area is that even without a conservation subdivision, so these are just a few slides that we put together. So this is up here, Route 9, this is our pond, and we located a few more ponds in the area, just a few miles, like we just did a very quick Google Earth research, and we located these four ponds. There's, I think there's one here, there's a tiny one, two, three, four. It's just all the way Eastman Road south, I believe. So it's just right in our vicinity, and that is our, that is our land, 210 acres, which we are putting into a trust for perpetuity, like no one will ever do anything to 175 acres. If they are hilly, if they are wetlands or not, I mean, they will never be anything. So this is just the zoning. So all this, right here, all this light yellow is rural conservation. And what we found, very curiously, is that around this pond, at one point in time, I don't know when, before my time, someone applied for change of zoning. And we found that right now this is residential and is very dense. So what a conservation subdivision or conservation easement is to avoid that in 100 years, someone will come and change the zoning like that happened 30 years ago, 40 years ago. But it can happen. Under a conservation subdivision, it will never happen. So this is, right here, this is Pond 1, this is one, and we found that around that pond, there are structures. This is a house 101 feet away from the pond. We found that there's another house 120 feet from the pond, there's another structure 190. And all this white area, right here is the key, is clearing, is, all that is cleared. There's grass, it's clear, there's no forest. Now, that's another example, right here, this is that pond, this is all cleared. Again, this is just like ours, it's a man-made pond, and we have all this clearing, we have a structure there, a structure there, one structure at 155 feet away from the pond.
You also had roads.
Yeah, we have, yes. Now, that is this other one here. Again, we have a tennis court right next to it, we have a house 25 feet away from it, we have a house 55 feet away from it. All this happened without a conservation subdivision. And this one is the best one, I think. So all these, all these houses are around this pond, there's all this clearing, 140 feet, 105, 170, and these ponds are perfectly healthy. They are not eutrophied, they are not, I mean, there's no excessive runoff, there are fish, there are swimming ducks right here, so people swim there. Again, and this, this is something that happened before my time, but we are, we have also, people ask, well, are you having sprinklers? Are you, are you having? Honestly, having sprinklers would be very easy to put in in our construction documents, but we are not even thinking about sprinklers. I mean, we're talking about, are we going to be allowed to build houses? This is our pond, and we have, we have the distances. In general, are, according to, they are very similar to what we've seen just in the area. This is the water, the wetlands that we have, and we are away from them, we're just, that slide just shows how we are not, we don't have development around the creek, around the wetlands, or the, so now, this is, this is a different subject. This is not related to ponds, it's just related to density. So all this area is rural residential, and on the rural residential, we have 15 acre lots, sometimes five, sometimes 10, under open space or not, it depends on that. But even without conservation subdivision, we see that properties tend to cluster around developable areas. So the shade here, the shadows here show steep slopes, so people tend to avoid steep slopes. And it's not that we are not building on steep slopes because they are the least desirable land. The, steep slopes and wetlands are the most sensitive areas environmentally speaking. Right? So this, all this happened without a conservation subdivision. This is just the way regular development happens under rural residential. And we have houses 160 feet from each other, 120, 135. So development tends to cluster. This is, this is something, and this is just a few hundred feet from where we are. Same thing, if you see the circle on the key up there, it shows the same thing. Structures 140 feet from each other, and that's the density that happens just by nature. This is what we have, which is not very different now, but it's just developed in a much more organized way. So our conclusion, conservation easement will guarantee the land in perpetuity, a conservation subdivision will provide more environmental protection inside the developed areas, no wildlife corridors will be-- No wildlife corridors will be disturbed. Development around the pond will not have an adverse environment. And it's not just me saying that. We have spent countless hours of serious scientific research on this because we want, we want the pond to be healthy. I mean, a lot of people say, well, all the runoff is going to go into the pond and it's going to get eutrophied. As owners, we don't want that to happen. People have said, well, people are going to throw the clippings into the pond. As owners, we don't want to do that. And the truth is that when someone owns something, they take care of it. What has happened in our pond is that uninvited guests come there and they fish and they have bonfires and they have fun, and they leave garbage behind. So when someone owns something, they take care of it. We own this and we want to, we want it to be great. Thank you.
Would you like standing before we, Glenn? Anything last?
I just want to know, are there any other comments? I would respectfully request that we close the public hearing for oral comment. They've had the opportunity. Should you wish to leave it open for written comment, clearly you can do that for a period of time.
Well, I think our preference would be to adjourn it next month, continue to take comment, written, and the board will discuss it next month. And then, any last comments from the board now before we adjourn this? We do have one more preliminary, one more new application I'd like to get to. Any comments, Ron?
Not on this project, no.
Okay. Steve?
Well, I think there's been an awful lot brought out by the public comment tonight. I mean, the fact that the Hudson Highland Land Trust is not looking to take the conservation easement, questions from the fire department, you know, Fonstock, bring up, and some of it's addressed in the EAF, I get that. But, you know, I think it might be a good idea, if not next month, then, you know, whenever the board's able to do it, to perhaps hold a workshop on this particular application and completing secret review on it, closing out the public hearing and, you know, looking to move forward. So if the board wants to consider scheduling a workshop, you know, I don't know what schedules are for it, but perhaps seven o'clock before the regularly scheduled meeting might not be a bad idea.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to the next month.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
One additional thing, taking Steve's advice, set up a workshop prior to the next month's meeting. Anybody have a problem with seven o'clock? Okay. I don't think we need a motion for that.
We usually should.
Should?
Usually have a scheduled meeting at 7:30.
All right, we have to advertise.
You're going to want to give public notice.
I have to advertise it also, you're right. Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We do have one last one. We jumped him. Jamie Coglan.
Evening. Thank you. Some of you may know this building. It's on Route 9, headed north. I didn't realize how popular the building was until your chairman told me that he got his first beer there. But we have, we've been looking for a way to make this building accessible. So our goal is to change its use to not just a store, which is, it was before, the old dew drop-in antique store. It has most of its parking in the back, which is a part of the master plan. It gets most parking in the back. And so now, we want to make a entry off the back, off the rear of the main floor, down to where the parking is now. But we'd also like to bring parking, a parking area for handicap up in front. So we have a small spur, about 100 feet of driveway, which we would bring up to the front of the garage, which you can see in the back here. And that would give us the ability to put handicap spaces that are on grade with the front door. In addition to that access, we wanted to build a covered stair in the back, which goes down to the parking area in the back. We are near Clove Creek. This is all gravel, and we envision gravel roadways and pervious material to be used to get handicap into the, into the building. So those are the exterior improvements. Inside, we'll be renovating for office use with new bathrooms, but the, we had the septic system tested. It yields, its capacity is somewhere around 450 gallons per day, which is virtually the same as was for the store and matches what we, what we need for the office use. Clove Creek is fairly close to the building, but there is a considerable bank between the water's edge so that the 100-year floodplain does not encroach on any of the upper, you know, parking level we're building. And, yeah, that's pretty much the long and short of it. We're looking to make the building more accessible and to change its use to allow office use. In 1989, there was a second floor added. Chuck Smith was the architect. He added trusses and a top floor so that the, you may, you may recognize only the lower floor, but it now is two-story.
You spoke earlier about there being the possibility of a beer hall that has been quiet.
Well, you know, it's interesting. I've been approached by two guys who want to bring a brewery to Cold Spring. Another guy wants to make a chocolate factory. And no sooner than I get my application in for it to be an office, somebody asked me to, they have a cabinet store here. So, you know, to change the use, how broad is that interpretation of office space? Is it conceivable to have office retail? Can we make it that broad?
What's the zoning?
If I could speak to that, the, and as you understand, the zoning ordinance does have a table of acceptable uses, which relate to the specific zone that it's in. Once you better define what the activity may be within both floors, you should compare those uses to see if they're compatible with what's permitted in the zone. If they fall under a retail or a general business category, might be fine, but you first have to make sure that it complies with zoning.
Well, as I say, that just happened in the last, before the application got in. But that would be something I'd like to look at to, if, if I can keep us on a schedule, I'll add that, want to add that to the, but I will look into that, make sure that the retail does not, because that's what was its most recent use, was as a store.
Right.
Is that still a factor, Ron, that EAF has not been completed?
Yeah, the, if we can get into the technical memorandum, which the board has in front of them. Obviously, this is the first meeting of the applicant to present to the board. Initially, you typically classify the project pursuant to the zoning ordinance. Seeing as there's no significant exterior improvements planned and the existing building is, I think, 4,000 feet or less, it qualifies as a minor project, so you should initially classify it as such at this meeting. However, with respect to completeness of the application, he's lacking an EAF. So it's clearly incomplete at this time. I've been formally communicating, communicated with the applicant to advise him that at least a short-form EAF is required that should be submitted without delay. So that relates to completeness. With respect to the environmental issues, with respect to seeker, it would be deemed an unlisted action pursuant to seeker. I don't know of any other involved agencies, so tonight you could likely classify it as an unlisted action, declare yourselves as lead agency, as Steve's indicated in the prior application before you tonight. So you can at least address those issues. There's statutory referrals that are necessary since the project lies along Route 9. Again, it has to get referred to county planning pursuant to 239M. And again, recognizing that Clove Creek traverses both parcels that are involved in this application, you might wish to refer to the town conservation board.
Also, the fact that it fronts on Route 9?
And then it fronts on Route 9, it requires a referral to county planning.
Ron's absolutely right as far as seeker review goes. The thing is, and you should note it, you really shouldn't be making, even though I'm sure that it's going to turn out that way in the end, shouldn't be making seeker determinations even as to classify until you have an EAF. I mean, we know where it's going to come out at the end because it's pretty obvious from the project, but just as a procedural matter, you probably shouldn't. And you also shouldn't send, you can't send, applications to county planning without an EAF. So, I mean, look, I mean, I don't want to be standing in the way of this, so I think maybe the thing to do would be to, if the board's inclined to move things along, declare yourselves lead agency and adopt a, and declare it an unlisted action and refer to county planning, subject to submission of a completed EAF. And there will be no official declaration and no referral until that's done. That way, you don't have to wait until next month if the board's inclined to do that. And, you know, just so it's clear, the next guy comes in, doesn't have an EAF, doesn't automatically get, you know, because next, may not be so obvious. You know what I'm saying?
Okay. Anybody else have, yeah, go ahead. Somebody?
No, no.
All right. Should we take a motion to classify this as a minor, excuse me, minor site plan?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to declare it unlisted action?
Conditionally.
Conditionally.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the planning board as lead agency? Motion? Second.
Conditionally.
Conditionally.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
239M referral, but again, conditionally. If you don't get that EAF, it's not going to county planning and not going to...
Okay. Prepare and send a 239 conditionally.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Site visit?
Let's see, is it, yeah. We already have two for that day, right?
So the next day, I believe, would be the 4th. It would be after the 28th.
February 4th.
February 4th.
And the last procedural thing to consider is whether you want to conduct a site visit on the property.
Working on a date, February 4th. Anybody problems with that?
For me?
I'm familiar with the site, so...
I'm familiar with the site. I can't make it either, so. Motion's at effect.
I'll make that motion.
34th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Adjourn.
Sorry.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Site visit?
Let's see, is it, yeah. We already have two for that day, right?
So the next day, I believe, would be the 4th. It would be after the 28th.
February 4th.
February 4th.
And the last procedural thing to consider is whether you want to conduct a site visit on the property.
Working on a date, February 4th. Anybody problems with that?
For me?